And if everyone is ready, we'll go ahead and get started. First of all, I want to welcome everyone to the McCurry County Board of Education Regular Board Meeting, May 23rd, 2013, at 6:00 PM here at the Central Office Building. The first thing on the agenda is a policy meeting in order with real talk. Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Shook.
Here.
Mr. Kidd.
Here.
Ms. Gilry.
Here.
And Mr. Davis.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All addendum, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda and any addendum. And tonight, we will be voting on our school property and workers' comp insurance. And under that item, which is E on everyone's agenda, we will have to place student accident insurance as the next letter, which will be F. So you will have E, McCurry County School District's property and liability insurance and working compensation insurance for 2013-2014 school year. Immediately under that, you will have F, or F will be placed, and we will be asked to vote on that. And that item will be our student accident insurance. So board members, please mark that on your agenda. And we need a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum to this agenda.
Real conference, Ms. Gibson. Um, Ms. Shook, um, Mr. Kidd.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Blair.
Uh.
And Chair of the Senate. The next item on our agenda is to elect the Board Vice Chair. I'd like to make a motion to Roxanne Shook, Board Vice Chair.
I didn't know we was needing a Vice Chair, I thought it was Chair. The Chair is the one that resigned?
Yes, the Chair resigned.
So in that case, the Vice Chair steps in and acts in that capacity until we elect a new Chair.
I think I shared some information with you, maybe back in March, I'm not sure, because we knew this was going to come up. I've checked your policies and procedures, checked, checked your class statutes, contacted John Bowles, Texas Core Association. The only word I've been able to find is from Robert's Rules of Order. In particular, I'm looking at Article 10 of Robert's Rules of Order concerning, since you're part of the procedure of certain officers and minutes. And it does say that in case of the absence of the President, first questions must preside. In case of illness or resignation or death of the President, if the first vice President becomes President for an unexpired term, unless you have rules to the contrary. I've not been able to see any rules to the contrary, so that's my understanding.
I mean, to change your order.
Correct, my understanding is that Ms. Gilry has stepped up into the Chair position, and that leaves the vacancy as Vice Chair.
That's fine. I'll second that.
No call please?
Yes.
Roxanne, Brandon.
Hi.
And Chair of the Senate. The next item on the agenda is through Communications, recognition here for the high school and the principal. We'll let Mr. Wright take over and give the presentation of that.
A couple of years ago, Ms. Ross was given to hold the principalship at the high school. And we've asked her to follow a corrective action plan at the high school. And this was a very involved, detailed process that had a lot of specific information and things that Ms. Ross, her teachers, her council, classified staff, and everyone out there at the high school had to do in order to achieve higher student test scores. Because that's what it's about, student learning. And we developed a plan. Took quite a long time to develop the plan. All the district leadership team was involved in this. I want to salute Mr. Moore and Renee back there, and Mr. Anderson for helping us develop this plan along with Jeff Terry, because obviously that, when you're in time, you have to do something with student learning, that involves technology. But we gave her a thorough plan to follow, and her teachers to follow. And the thing about it is, is we gave it to them in December. And the counselors, Ms. Ross, and everybody just basically turned that school upside down, because it wasn't headed in the right direction. And they did it in the middle of the year over a two-week process while everyone was out on Christmas break. And we're beginning to reap the rewards for their effort. As of this past week, McCurry-Supper High School was identified as one of the best high schools in the United States. And I'm going to allow Ms. Ross to, ask Ms. Ross to come up here and give you a little bit of information about what they have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Everything that Mr. Wright has told you is true, and the word "plan" is probably a very kind word, what was expected of our school to do. And I'm going to give you a little copy of a portion of that press release from U.S. News and World Report about how our high school was selected, and we're very proud of this. This article explains the process about how U.S. News identified their best high schools in the nation. The first step was to identify test scores being above the expected average for the students being served. The second step was to identify schools whose disadvantaged students were performing above the average. And the third step was to look at the advanced placement scores of the students that were participating in those programs. Schools were ranked across the United States, all U.S. public high schools were considered. Of the schools that were identified, in order to earn a gold, you had to be above in all three. In order to earn a silver, you had to be above in two, plus meet the average of a 14 for college readiness. In order to earn a bronze, you had to meet two, and then maybe not meet that college readiness. The readiness benchmark was 14, we're at a nine. So of that circle that you're looking at there on that graph, that is 21,000 schools in the United States. We are in that little bronze triangle there, the 13 percent. So Kentucky had 58 schools that were identified as either silver, gold, or bronze. We are a bronze high school. There were 58 total, as I said earlier. And of the national percentage, we're in the top 22.8 percent of the high schools in the United States. Yay! So we are very proud. It's a very proud moment for our community, our school, our teachers, our students, and our staff. I do have a thought here tonight. Our site-based council, this council has been functioning together for three years. Mr. Kenneth Sprad is a teacher member. Mr. Sprad, would you stand up for him, please? Christina Hollis is a parent member. Mr. Chad Stare is a teacher member. On our council also, yes, let's get over and get out of here. Also on council are Linda Roberts and Ms. Melinda Strunk. And this council has been together for three years and has been a major part of facilitating the growth and the changes in that school. Also here tonight is Ms. Sharon Durham, she's also a faculty member of our school. So I appreciate everybody's hard work. It certainly is a crowning moment for us. We've been celebrating for a couple of weeks out there, so there's no pop when you walk in and you see burgers and you feel done grill, that's what we're doing. So we're very proud of it, we're going to advertise it. We do have the logo on our website right now, so it's being recognized as a bronze school. So next year, next year, are we going to go for silver and gold?
We thank you, Ms. Ross.
Thank you. I'd like to also say, you know, that it takes all of us working together, and the support that has been provided by the Central Office staff and the members of the Board of Education has been phenomenal. It's not always been easy, but now we're seeing the benefits and looking forward to even more great new students. Thank you. While I have before, maybe send another thing. This information is based on a 2010-11 test data, because it takes a year to compile the information and write at the schools. But since then, our school, even within this school year, our school has sent competitive teams to the national level in forestry, in our entrepreneurship program. We have had state archery teams, we have had state participants at the cross-country level. We have had four students in the top 40 in the state for our academic team. And next school year, we're looking to double our academic offerings for dual credits. We are expanding our partnerships for dual enrollment. And we are also looking at offering courses through distance learning. So we are looking for innovative schools. Stay away. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Ross, that's great. That's great news. And I want to salute all of your chair members for the rest.
If I were to go, we have actions back in the same. Any members have anything that you want to discuss in actions back in the same? If not, we'll move to the second one. All done. No one has any, or I need a motion and a second?
I'll say.
No call please? Ms. David.
Hi.
Ms. Roxanne.
Hi.
Ms. Brandon.
Hi.
Ms. Blair.
Hi.
The next item on our agenda is to stand to six actions with discussion. We need to go on these individual. Number A, if anyone discussing, we need to discuss as a goal, but we're just developing. Action for final building plans, motion and seconded. We need a motion for final building plans. Ms. David.
Okay.
No call, Ms. David?
Yes.
Ms. Roxanne.
Hi.
Ms. Brandon.
Hi.
Ms. Blair. And Chair of the Senate. B, the technology sales protection. I guess we need to, some discussion on that? Anyone need to discuss on that? If not, we'll move on to motion and a second. I need a motion, please.
All right, Ms.
I second. No call please, David?
Hi.
Roxanne?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And Chair of the Senate. C is the championship budget. I need a motion and a second. I would like to have some discussion there. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Individual board agenda should have some tentative budget notes, 2013-14. And under the Kentucky Regulations Statute, it is required that all school districts submit the tentative budgets for the following school year by May 30th, 2013. So all this information is tentative. I'll start with the general fund, which is also known as the fund one. The revenues, your current forward balance is 405,000, and that's just any funds that are unspent. That amount could be more, or it could be less, so that's just the projected total that we will not spend this year. Taxes make up a little bit over $3 million. Your, and those totals are based on this year's actual totals. You can't really budget for taxes if they're not, we don't have the assessment factor, so we're going all based on this year's assessments. So your interest on investments is the interest that we receive from our general fund bank account. Your seat funds, normally KDE provides a tentative calculation by this time for the tentative budget, but they've not posted those tentative totals, so the totals that you have here, which is, the seat is 40.4 million, that is the forecasted calculations. Those will change. We also receive funds for the National Board Certification. We currently have one teacher with that certification, so the state reimburses us the stop that we made for that teacher. We receive miscellaneous reimbursements for the state of $39,000, and that's for the gold grant. The new thing that's on the tentative budget for next year is your on behalf payments. In the past, I want to explain what on behalf payments are. On behalf payments are payments that other entities make on behalf of the school district. So it's money that we're not actually, or payments we're not actually having to make, such as your state, the state pays for your health insurance, a portion of health insurance. So the employer and employee doesn't have to pay. Teacher retirement is the same thing, technology, debt service payments, all those payments are made on behalf of the school district. Normally, those payments are just recorded on the books so that anybody, any entity would get in on our accounting records, see that we, those payments are being made, just not by the district. This year, the state has required that effective July 1st, we budget for those. So really, your revenues and your expenses are offsetting themselves. You just have to show that in your budget. So we don't have $4.6 million extra to spend, we've just got to show that those, we've got a budget. Because if I presented a budget to you after I made those on behalf, or posted those on behalf payments, you would see more expenses than what we have budgeted. So to kind of clear up that confusion for board members or for anybody outside of the board, we have to budget for that. We also receive medical reimbursement, and that's estimated at $50,000. And then the last item that we received is fund transfers. I know at a previous board meeting, we approved for any funds left over out of the building fund to be distributed to the general fund for operating costs. So that's estimated to be $153,000 this year. So that gives the total general fund revenues budget at 20.9 million. Your expenses, the biggest expense for the fourth county is the full-time salary and The salary and fringe portion includes your staff increases each year, every employee who works, 140 days or more receives a staff increase for their annual year of experience. Normally, we budget, in the past, we budgeted $250,000 for certified substitutes. This year, we've only budgeted $175,000. And instead of just paying for all substitutes, we're allocating that out to the schools so that we can track how much each school is spending on certified substitutes. And kind of as an incentive, we're, at the end of the year, if they don't use that full allocation, then they get to spend that on instructional supplies and materials for the following year. And we have the classified substitutes budgeted at over $1,000. The board pays for a group deal insurance across the board. We have to budget at least $30,000 based on possible retirees. If you retire, you receive 30 percent of your seat days, or seat rate paid. So we have to budget for that. We may not, depending on the number of retirees, you may not use that at all. The next thing is athletic coaching stipends. This amount is for, does include the amount that we did cut for the assistant athletic positions.
So how much was, you have that, how much was last year that the athletic coaching stipends was?
We cut 24,600 in assistant coaches. So 24 seats plus this, 79, because those stipends amounts didn't change. So you would pay, it would be this amount plus 24 seats that we cut. We pay 27,750 for academic coaches and stipends, and once your academic coaches, your problem solving coaches. And then included in your salary and fringe total is those on behalf payments. So if you look the amount for those payments, they're the same as your revenue, so it's just zero except that. The next thing is your site-based instructional supplies, and the board approved to give, to allocate 3 percent of the people amount, or the guaranteed base amount, to schools for their instructional supplies. The next biggest expense for the district is the plant operations, your electricity, your water, sewage, repairs and maintenance, all those utility bills. Your transportation for repairs, fuel, tires, is 439,000. Then you have other operating expenses, which the biggest item that will be discussed tonight is the insurance for your property, workers' comp, if there's an accident. Your random drug testing, all the different legal medical services, any athletic purchases, cost dues for the power, nutrition, your supplies and equipment, the other operating expenses that I just mentioned. The general fund does have fund transfers. We allocate $50,000 each year for transfer into the CATS, the technology grant, and the state matches what, what we have to match with the state offers. And then we have a local tax match. So the state gives us so much money for our building fund, and we have to match 247 of that for those bond payments. And then we have contingency in the general fund. We calculated that to be 450,000. You have to have at least a 2 percent contingency to be in compliance with KDE. That 2 percent contingency is a little bit over 400, but since our budget is so tight, then we want to have a little more contingency just in case those are not expected to be seen. So that's the general fund. Your special revenues are your local and federal grants. And I've kind of did a chart. KDE had already posted the state grant allocations. So the state grants consist of ESS, preschool, your professional development, safe school gifted a talented community education and achievement, microachievement. So the total that we'll lose from last year's allocations is 189,870. The biggest chunk was the preschool, state preschool. And to compensate for the preschool, we have the general fund, they have to cover the diesel fuel costs and the bus driver costs.
I don't know if I should interrupt you here. On the community ed, on the grant, that was a position that we terminated, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, but it says it's, there's no reduction, and so we're still getting the $20,000 grant even though we've canceled, or we've done away with the position?
Yep. Those duties will be distributed to another employee, and this $20,000 will cover that employee, or whatever part of that employee's salary.
That doesn't seem to be an issue.
It says the title, that other person, the parent involvement grant was cut also, so this will cover...
So we're using another grant to cover that now?
Yes.
I don't know about the big idea.
But the $20,000 for that person's employee's salary was, did not, this $20,000 grant, $1,000 grant did not cover that full salary difference.
It depends on the terms of the grant as to how the funds can be used. So if the grant terms permit the use of the funds on something other than salary for a specific person?
If a grant comes in check before we do it at all, I mean, well, also, if we're using a grant for, for the man?
All the budget reductions, grants, everything, as far as moving money through CATS and everything like that, it's been okay through W Department of Education.
I look on the...
Or we else, guys, wouldn't have been able to do that.
I look on the budget, and then I talk to the people that's been involved with the pay cuts and stuff. And what you said we were saving is not where we're near while we're saving. Case in point, this is the time to do that. The academy voted, you all voted to close the academy. Mike Cash has cut $16,000. The other three teachers at no cuts whatsoever. You saved no money there. Special education teacher, not sure how much he made. I even posted it 50, I don't think that's, I think it's less than that. And a secretary, 26,000. So adding those up, we're saving 92,000, maybe, but you said we were saving 200,000. We are moving, and this is where another cost comes in, I don't understand. You're moving the academy children out of a building that's free and clear to go, and you're putting them in a one classroom that's going to be divided, which you're putting them in Debbie J. Peterson's old room. And I know how big that is. I also know that there is a darkroom there that will be turned into a classroom where chemicals have been used for over 20-something years, which I would question that, if it gets in that area. But we're taking them out of nice rooms, able to move, and you're putting them in a contained area. And you said it wasn't. So I don't, another one I can talk about is PINELINE. Career Institute, you said that we were going to be saving this much money, but where's that at? One person has been cut $8,000, one person are in another position. Another lady that you're getting rid of is an aide, but you're moving her, she's at no cuts whatsoever. And so you've taken a secretary and aide away from a career institute, and you've locked them with two teachers and one special education teacher. And you've put Mr. Cash there, so I don't see, you know, if we're, we're taking people that make very little money, cutting them, letting them make very little more money, but we're not doing that whole amount, like in maintenance, you said it would be, I think, what did you say, $50,000 or something?
Thirty-four percent, three positions.
And yet, we took their salary and already we cut them down 11,000. And, so we didn't save that true amount. So I don't think anything on the budget is correct, Mr. Wright.
The budget was approved by the Board of Education.
It was approved by three months.
At the last board meeting. And those figures have to calculate into what we're going to send the...
And they shook them up with me, you know, because that's what says the bottom of the budget cut.
I don't think that we did. I think, I think, I was misled, I think the board was misled, I think the public is misled, and I think we've done a very, very injustice to the employees that we cut and offer them back a pill. You know? I just, I think we didn't have to cut that much.
Again, we have to rely on our figures, the amount that we receive from the state seat funding, or the federal grants, and the staffing, and you have to align your expenditures up with your revenues. And our consultant kept sitting down here for the Kentucky Department of Education, Robert Stillman, immediately, when, and we covered this before, with all the work, immediately, he identified that our staffing was at 84 percent.
Correct.
And the model that the state provides is 75. Now, during...
You got rid of one person at Central Office, cut his salary, and he's moved into another job.
We have already approved the budget.
No, we didn't.
The budget's already been approved. Anyways, before I was in reference, you have to get down to the 75 percent. And we've had major budget cuts in our school district, along with all of the other school districts in the state of Kentucky, who are experiencing the same financial shortcomings. But in, to answer your question...
I don't think our last board meeting, we voted to get our staffing allocated.
No, but by doing the measures that we, by approving the measures that we took, by approving the reduction that we took, it is lowering our staffing percentages.
So, so it's got a maintenance position listed at, what was it, 34,000, say 35,000? You get that? So you're telling me we saved 35,000 by cutting that position out?
No, we think, we have it back at 11,000.
With a 12,000, with a $12,000 cut at a different job.
Well, I'll just let you all speak to that, and...
That's not us to speak, what, you, Mr. Wright, you're...
What, we've approved the budget, I presented the reductions, and tonight, we're moving through the specifics on what these... through the specifics on what these numbers mean.
How can you approve a tentative budget if what we done, like, in approving a budget and the cuts?
We've, we've approved the reductions. And this tonight is calculating the numbers and Christie's telling you all what, where these numbers are falling in all of these funds. We've approved the reductions.
Don't say we.
We've already done that.
Yeah, we didn't.
Ms. Druck, I'd just like to clarify that the alternative classrooms will not be housed in the basement. I don't know where that information came from. Allison Hamlin's CNA class is going down there. And that will be used for her storage for her hospital equipment.
So, where exactly will their classrooms be? Because I, the teachers told me that.
I don't know which teachers talked to you about that. That's the principals and site-based council's decision. The alternative classrooms will be housed in a part of the building that I have not talked to that teacher yet and out of respect for her, I'm not prepared to announce that publicly, but I will be happy to answer your questions if you want to start my next one with these.
I will.
Thank you.
Well, if, uh, if it had to be cut a million dollars, is that right? Well.
Didn't we cut that much?
Yeah, this statement that I'm explaining to you tonight contains those numbers.
Even with, even if we move people around and cut them half of what we said we were going to cut.
I don't see what the ground is.
That's not why I'm misleading that shit.
You don't understand, what we're saying is, is that they.
I know what you're saying.
But, so, I don't understand what you, if, if he says, I'm cutting this job, Larry, you're cut. But, now I'm coming back to you tomorrow and I say, Larry, I'm going to move you to Pinot and you're going to make less money. Well, on the budget, it said we were going to lose thirty thousand. That's how much we was going to save.
But, all the, all the cuts equal a million dollars, don't they?
On paper?
On paper.
Well.
And they have to equal out that because the state, the board, they have to, uh, approve our tentative budget.
Well, if they don't, somebody be in trouble, won't they?
Oh, yeah. Some people are in trouble.
Well, I voted for it, I guess I'll be in trouble.
I don't, no, you're not going to be in trouble there. We all know. We all know. We're split board. Three to.
That's right.
Three to, Ms. Druck.
It might get any better. I wouldn't say that.
No, it won't get any better. Because you don't listen. We listen.
Why? Why is it I don't listen?
Dude, you need to calm down. Lower your voice.
Listen.
Chill out.
We're, as current.
If you don't like the way I talk, hit the door.
Don't speak to my daughter that way.
Well, I don't care.
Well, I do. I don't speak to your daughter that way.
Seriously, calm down.
I think we're in a pole.
I think that's it. I think you raised your voice to me first.
I understand, it's just to say, just.
Yeah, he did.
But, we all.
I apologize.
It's, it's not who's right or who's wrong, it's just let's be, be civil.
We don't be drama, but we have a right to agree and disagree.
But, you don't.
Yes, we do.
You only disagree with anything Brandon or I say.
Well, you don't, maybe you don't agree with us. It works both ways.
Not when it talks to a house.
We've been trying, I've been here four years and had training.
I had training too, and you had thirty-eight, or thirty-four hours training.
I had fifty.
I got mine in two years, you got yours in four.
Okay, but anyway, we've been trying in the.
Training only goes so far. You don't, you don't do your part.
Could I ask a question that might, might help clarify this? And, and I don't need.
Yes, you can.
I, I don't have an agenda on this. I don't have, uh, an answer. I'm just going from what I think is happening with the reduction in positions and so on. Personnel, some personnel have tenure or status.
Correct.
They have the right to maintain a position of some kind. Other personnel do not.
That's the personnel we're talking about here.
Okay. And, and I'm, I'm guessing, this is more jumping into the wrong, that where, even though you are seeing, as you say, you take Person A, and Person A's been taken out of one position, but then placed another, so you're saying, well, where's the savings on that? Because they're still here. That may be a person, may not, I don't know, but maybe a person who has a right to continue employment because of the length of time they've served here. The savings are probably coming in because there's another employee who unfortunately didn't have that status, that, that tenure or ten status. That's where the savings is coming in. Does that help? So, I think your total numbers of staff have gone down so that your percentage of your budget that you're spending on salaries and fringe has gone down.
That's what PDE is recommending.
I'll try to clarify this a little better. Get two that I know about, two maintenance positions. I think there were thirty, I don't know the exact amount, thirty-four, thirty-five thousand a piece, somewhere between what they, their salary is. Those two were to cut. So, that's a savings of seventy thousand total.
Without fringe.
But then, you don't cut those, yet you cut those two position titles, but you're really not cutting those pays because you offer one a job as a janitor at a twelve thousand dollar cut and you're going to create a position for another janitor at a twelve thousand dollar cut. So, you only save, what, twenty-four thousand off the savings? Does that clarify any more?
Yes, we have to net it. Yeah, it has to be net, and I think it is.
So, what we, what, not we, but what was voted on, on these budget cuts, isn't actually what got cut. Sir, some people got cut and whatnot for anything.
Well, when any position is abolished, you save the full amount of that salary. What happens to that employee, depending on if they have continued service is, by law, you have to move them into another position. When you move them into another position, you have to bump someone who doesn't have as many years' experience as they do.
I don't see bumping anybody by creating a position that we don't have, that's not bumping.
We're not creating a position. That's a position that the school district already had and we're moving them into a site-based allocated position, which we can do by law. So, for instance, take one of the maintenance men who lost their positions. They were moved to a site-based school.
Correct.
Okay? We're not paying them their thirty-five thousand dollar salary or whatever they made, right? And Christie, interrupt me here if I'm explaining this incorrectly. So, we've abolished the maintenance man for saving thirty-five, correct? Did?
Yes.
Agreed with that, Brandon? You agree with that?
I'm still trying to figure out where we're not creating positions. I got four pays.
So, anyways, you're moving one of those men or women down to a position at a school that is a site-based allocated position. And when you do that, see, we're not creating a job there. When you do that, you're having to bump someone who is in that position that doesn't have as much seniority as the maintenance man. So, that's already a board allocated position at whatever we pay a custodian or a tech person or whatever. That's already in the budget. We're not creating the job. That's a job that has been available because I bumped them down there and they're taking the place of someone who is empowered in that position. So, you do save the full thirty-five thousand dollars.
I know that when I was employed, I had twenty-two years' experience and I lost my job and it was no seniority law. They, it, that didn't count. Of course, I only saw a lawyer and the lawyers said, yes, you can. I didn't sue, I just went ahead and retired. I, um, wasn't aware that the policy had changed that you also, you all pay attention to seniority.
We follow the road, the rules of KDE, you know, and follow the law, the hiring practices and the policies about, about the Board of Education.
It's actually two thousand and four.
But, seniority is looked at, there's a reduction in force, a district-wide reduction in force. When, when I said, I apologize for this, but when I said seniority, I was talking about someone who's been here more than four years. What, if you're, you're certified, you've been here more than four years, you're tenured, if you're classified, you've been here more than four years, you cannot be discharged unless you follow Paris one-six-one-zero-one. So, that's.
Well, the grant people is the way that you just cut the position. You know? And then you don't have to go with seniority.
Yeah, I'd say, say seniority matters if it's reduction force, I mean, bringing people back. But not, I, I bet I meant the four years.
So, what happened at the last meeting is, is, is there was a three-two vote to approve the budget reductions. What Christie is, is, and this is showing, is, this is per budget proposal, the tentative budget is reflecting those numbers that was approved through the budget reductions at the, at that meeting.
I'm sorry, I just don't see it. I just, uh, lives were destroyed at that meeting. Nobody cared. We have somebody who needs to speak. Ms. Sharon, or somebody.
I don't think we have any to. Let me speak.
You're a.
For the board policy.
Yeah, for the board policy.
Sorry.
Give me five minutes to speak.
Okay. I'm, I'm on here on behalf, I used to be the community aid director of community education. I wrote, I wrote the grant for five years, had it renewed for the next following school year. According to what I've always seen, community aid law states that you cannot give that grant to a certified teacher. It cannot go to a certified teacher. Also, um, my main purpose of being here a couple weeks ago is putting in the voice that the board was saving twenty thousand dollars by cutting that position and that was a lie. Because I, the, I wrote the grant for twenty thousand dollars, the board matched five thousand. I was up to twenty-eight thousand because I had thirteen years' experience and my raises over the year. I wanted that clarified to the public that they wasn't saving twenty thousand dollars by subcutting my position because it's a grant awarded by KDE. And from what I know about community aid laws, it cannot be given to a certified teacher, a, a, an aide, and there's three or four other different, uh, positions that it lists into the contract.
And you're welcome to come in and talk to our instructional supervisors on, on that. There's the ones who contacted the Kentucky Department of Education and received wording that, that on how we're doing on a lot of these, or all of these reductions.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, you know, because it was lying because people were asking me, you know, I, I was not, I mean, twenty thousand dollars is what the grant is for, but it made the people think that I was getting, that you are saving twenty thousand in that position, which is, wasn't true. Because there was eight thousand dollars, I made five thousand dollar match, and like I said, I was up to three more thousand because of my years' experience, I had thirteen years. Uh, I've been community aid director for five. And I wrote, like I said, wrote the grant for five years and had it renewed for the following, next following school year.
So, we're having to pay you our general fund eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
But it's listed at twenty, there's another one.
Correct.
I said, there's another one. You had it listed as twenty thousand, but it's only an eight thousand dollar savings. That's, that's fine.
Thank you, Board Chair, for letting us speak.
Question.
All right, the federal grant allocations, I also did a chart across there on all the federal grants that we receive. Due to sequestration, we have been notified that it'll be approximately ten percent of the total allocation. It could be more based on, because most of these things are based on our free and bits, uh, lunchtime, not attendance. So, across there, we'll have a reduction, an estimated reduction of three hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight thirty-six. And for a total of our grants, our state, local, and federal grants, will be that five hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred six dollars. The next three funds are capital outlay, your building fund, and your debt service fund. The state provides funds with your capital outlay fund and your building funds to help pay for your bond payments, which is your principal and your interest, or any construction projects that were done in the past. So, when we issue those bonds, we have to pay them back in a certain percentage. The capital outlay revenues for next year is two hundred sixty-two, or two hundred sixty thousand, two hundred dollars, it was reduced by two thousand. The building fund was reduced by seventy-four hundred. And then our local batch, this is where that fund transferred from fund one is transferred into your building fund. So, that's revenues in your building fund. So, those total revenues for your capital outlay building fund and debt services, one point two million. The only expenses which are paid out of fund four hundred are your bond payments, which are the principal and the interest on those bond payments. Next year, those are scheduled to be a little over one million dollars. So, you'll have approximately a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to transfer from this fund back into the general fund to help for operating expenses. Your last fund is your food service fund. I'll start with the revenues. The school deposits or receives revenues based on sales to adults and students during normal, normally during lunchtime. So, I estimate that should be forty-two. I went low based on this year's actual numbers. It's not guaranteed. You never know if the school will decide to, to sell that, those items again next year. Food service also carries over, so we've estimated or projected that carry forward. Unspent funds to be twenty-eight thousand. The food service receives a certain percentage of taxes from the general fund account because those revenues are deposited into the same account. Your special functions are such as pot loads, banquet's, and catering. I estimate it low because you don't know if schools are going to participate in those as they did this year. Once again, your revenue for all-behind payments, the food service pays for your goods, head cooks, your food service directors. So, those all-behind payments are made there also for health insurance and environmental The state in the past is here, then that's twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for, uh, estate revenue. The federal revenue, we participate in the free lunch for all students. So, the federal government reimburses us for our expenses. So, that's approximately what seven million is. And then we also participate in the summer feed program. So, those revenues are approximately fifteen thousand. So, the total of ten of food service revenues for next year is a little over ten million. The expenses, um, are made up of the high-spiked salaries of eight hundred, eight thousand after goods, your head cooks, and your food service, uh, directors. And then the largest portion of those expenses are your operating expenses for food, meal, travel, and supplies.
Now, do you just need a motion?
Putting a motion to say, the chairman of KDE. Make the motion to the executive committee.
I'll second.
Go ahead, please. Ms. Eddie, um, Roxanne.
Hi.
Uh, Brad. Uh, Larry.
Hi.
And the chair votes out. All right, uh, we just get to the, uh, Smithtown property, a temporary easement for the Smithtown school. I had a question on that for, is, is there any legality of him going on the property back and forth liability?
Who and what are we talking about here?
He, uh, he has land behind the Smithtown school.
Mr. Cops here, if you'd like to get up, Mr. Cops.
Yes.
Come on up here.
I'll stay.
Up there's fine.
I'll stay.
Okay.
I've got property behind the Smithtown school. I've got about thirty acres back there and we're, we've logged out the bottom section. I've got approximately two and a half, maybe three acres that's on top of the cliff. And the only way I can get to it is through the school yard and just asking permission to drive a truck across the property.
I'll make a motion.
We'll, we'll only have about fifteen loads and probably a timeframe of about two weeks.
We have, uh, I've sent Mike Eagle, and Mike's talked to Daryl several times here in the past couple of weeks. Mr. Cops has been in my office and, and, uh, is going to take down a section of the fence. The only way he can access that couple acres is, is through Smithtown. And, uh, I spoke with Leonard here in the past week about some, uh, easement agreements and things that need to be prepared and topo map and all that's on the agenda. Is there any agreement that they'll prepare any damages under the property?
Yeah, if you like, I, I've worked on a temporary easement agreement, I filed it with Mr. Cops.
Is that the one that I have in my hand?
I've got one that's, it's slightly modified because I did put, I wasn't sure, I thought you all would want it.
Yeah, I know this, this one that I've got, uh, uh, what I want to do is not explain any, anyway.
Okay.
Just drive across it, yeah.
I'm not sure. We're looking at the same thing, so. I have prepared just a temporary easement agreement that would allow Mr. Cox to go across. Okay, no, that is different. That's our standard school facilities, and I had asked that you look that up.
Yeah, I want, I will be here with the cell.
Sure. I thought that would give kind of a general...
Yeah.
But I recognize that it wasn't, didn't really fit needed with that, we didn't use that agreement. And this would specifically allow you to go across the Smithtown School property to transport cut timber to move from your adjacent property. And it did one, an end date. It would be finished by a certain date, and I wasn't sure, so I appreciate saying that. It provides that you will repair, replace, and restore any old damage which may have been done to the landowner's real estate, including, I live in, two fencing, grass, sod, soil, pavement, canopies, because my understanding is there's a canopy that you might be going under between...
Yeah, there's room for us to go through that.
Okay. And gates, and I wasn't sure about a gate or not, I just put that in there.
In the back, there's a small gate, just a walk-through gate that's back porch. I think we'll only have to take out one post and fold the fence back.
Okay.
And then put it back. And we might possibly take out two posts to, you know, put them right back where they are.
And this would require you to basically put everything back the way it was, to just put it back the way you found it.
If the truck makes any marks in the grass back there, you know, like saying, we'll put tops all on it and put it back in the grass.
And then you'll be, there is insurance provisioning, and you will be responsible for maintaining any type of insurance that may be necessary, but I believe, I was given the understanding yesterday that you would have insurance on your vehicle.
Yes.
And it would be primarily you and making anybody working with you who would be on there. And I'm also assuming that the Smithtown property is otherwise vacant, but there will not be any children or any other people on the premises that we've got here, and so we're asking you to get your liability or any type of insurance you need to cover personally your property damage, and we're asking you to indemnify, say, the whole, the school district partners for any of all claims of any damage.
Would a performance bond work just as good?
I needed to look at it.
Because I've talked with Buddy about large insurance policy, and it's a $3,000 minimum premium, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, what was I thinking? Or maybe certainly if somebody got hurt on the school district's property, we want to make sure that the school district is responsible for that. And then that property damage will be taken care of, so.
Still won't require the, I think they specified a million dollars.
That is the standard school use...
See, that's $3,000. See, that puts me to the point where I've got to leave those three standards. We're only going to take out probably $7,500 worth of timber, and the time we pay anybody, the insurance premium would eat it all up.
I understand, and this, you know, it girds, it girds pleasure. This seems like a low-risk activity of the possible private damage, but whatever you all are comfortable with.
This truck that will be crossing, that has, you know, a personal liability on it that would cover anything that it does, you know, without an additional policy.
And I mean, it's not being property damage, except as far as the vehicle, whatever, I guess, yeah. I can't see having to get a million-dollar policy.
It's not feasible.
It's not worth the wood for that.
No.
Now, saying, if you're okay with signing an agreement that makes you responsible and that you'll agree that if there's any, if guys hurt, any property damage, whatever, you're fully and solely responsible.
Absolutely, it is that.
Then I think if you all likewise okay with that, that's how it would be fixed to cover it. And then you said about two weeks, but starting when?
Yeah, it will depend on the weather.
Sure.
You know, we can, we can get out 15 loads, which I'm estimating is back there. We can do that in five or six days, but, you know, with the weather, we might be there two weeks.
Again, whatever you all be comfortable with, you want to make it June 30th, July 1st, something like that, and give...
Get fined every day, you can't get it half till.
See, with crossing...
You give them a deadline of crime.
With crossing that property, see, it ran for two or three days. We wouldn't want to cross it.
It turned up on you.
The ground was wet.
I'd say July 1st, and if it needs an extension, the weather, then we ask for an extension.
Well, have it, have it would be this, except for the July board meeting, because then it will either be done by the July board meeting, or if it isn't, then you could extend it to July board meeting if that worked. So, and what, does anyone have that date?
It's not March 1st.
Probably be the 25th.
Fourth, or Thursday?
We said, 27th, June.
I was talking July.
25th.
And you think that would bring you to Foxville?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to allow the agreement to be settled.
The 7th.
Mr. Cox, if you want to look it over, or is it...
Roll call, please. Debbie.
Hi.
Roxanne.
I.
Brandon.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
The chair votes out. It was passed. The next leads us to the Missouri County District of Property and My Health Insurance.
I have a question about that. We had a meeting which has due some influence, and in the bidding process, as I understand it, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in the bidding process, Buddy followed all the bidding process criteria. And so, you know, in my mind, he's the only dude that we bought, so I make the motion that we accept his bidding package with the property and the mortgage compensation.
I'll second that. Need a roll call, please, Debbie?
Hi.
Roxanne?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Chair votes out. The next is the student insurance group at the, your ads. All right, have you looked over the student activity insurance? Buddy? Anyone? Are you familiar with which one you chose?
We looked at the low bid on that Nelson influence, and it's $7,000, but it didn't contain the catastrophic, if you added catastrophic in there, it made it $19,000. So that being said, the Roberts insurance came up to be the $18,000 is the low bid.
They're all pretty much assigned, except for...
Pretty much same coverage.
Except for, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I would pick. What do you all have your...
How much of a difference does it make?
A thousand.
A thousand.
I think if we can keep it with one person, you know, all of our insurance, that can better off, and if we keep it accountable, we're even better off, that's personally. The difference between the Craig tree Wilsons on the standard life is actually like $7,000.
Yeah.
It's the 25/4, and the Roberts insurance is $18,000.
Any way you can get in that ballpark?
Your bid specs say...
Yeah. Can't do it.
May I address that comment?
Well, sure, sure.
Your bid specifications state that price is only 30% of the consideration. I'm not necessarily trying to argue with it, and I appreciate your comment, and you all blew my mind. I have a, I have a two-day work on presentation for you all to tell you why you should take my bid, but anyway, the bid specs...
You get what you pay for.
The bid specs say that it's 30% is all that's taken care of. The rest of it is experience, the rest of it is quality of service, and I'd just like to say Grady's service trials insurance for the last eight, 10 years, and we've never heard of him wanting, so, but, that's, thank you.
There is one issue here, and I've learned a lot in the last two days. This district has stood up with the law procurement code, and he had multiple bids on the student act insurance, but actually, group act insurance is one of the things in the law procurement code you don't have to do, and so it's only if you don't want to. But because you did bid it through KDC, I think if you wanted to kind of work out a more negotiated bid, I think you could, but I think you'd have to reject the bids that you do have before you went that route. That would be my problem. Otherwise, if you're using your big puzzle issues, you have to explain any time you depart from what appears to be the road through this school.
In my feelings, and it's just my feelings, you know, Craig tree had the own bid, and so, you know, because he followed the process, I think the bid should go to Craig tree Wilson. But with the student insurance, you know, the 25/4 is so much higher based on the, you know, $7,500 more, and, and like you said, he didn't follow the law procurement mode at code, so, yeah. I say 18,000 is the Roberts insurance, but that's, you know, that's maybe.
How much more is Buddy, what yours, what your price based on getting both the leads?
That was the workers' comp.
Oh, just the workers' comp.
The scholastic separate, and I understand, and I appreciate you all wanting to keep it local. I understand if you rebid it, we'll be rebid with scholastic. We don't understand why, as we looked at the bid specifications, and looked, we looked at some other school systems across the state or where the bids came in, and scholastic on some of them were 40%, and it blew our mind when we saw these bids come in. We had no idea why it's out of, out of the ballpark, but I would, like I say, I'd be able to beat the same if we rebid it, because, you know, we'll go back and see somebody else's bid, and then go back and try to beat it.
Need a motion or second thing?
I make the motion to go with the Roberts nationwide bid, that's $18,000.
I'll second. Need a roll call, please? Uh, Debbie?
Hi.
Roxanne?
I.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
I'll second, all right.
The chair votes out. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the random drug case. I think we had two bids on that one.
Two bid for Winchester, Patton, Burkes, and Industrial Farms. If anyone has any questions, I have Miss Sunshine Taylor here to ask questions too regarding the drug testing, any drug testing.
The only difference I saw was a full smaller difference. Is that correct? You can flip.
I saw a lot of it.
It's good.
I don't think there's much...
I thought it was 19, you know. It was like 19, and one charged 19, and one charged 21, and then from one, they charged 23, and one charged 25.
It's clear.
Yeah, so, and after going through all of them, I'll make a motion that we accept Winchester, Patton, and Burkes.
I'll second.
Need a roll call, please, Debbie?
Uh-huh.
Roxanne?
Dave.
Brandon?
Matt.
Uh, Larry?
Hi.
And the chair votes out. The next one on the...
I've got two.
Oh.
Okay. None of them tonight, and I'd like to go back and read them.
We didn't have it, okay, we didn't do it. I'll give you the other one, you want?
Make a motion. Mike Martin, I'd, I'd be very happy to do industrial arms.
Second, that motion. Roll call, please. Debbie?
Um.
Roxanne?
I.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Love.
And the chair votes out. The next on the agenda is the lightcoming on the district health agreement for 2013, Motion is second or any discussion we have?
I know during the budget cut, we was talking something about health problems, and salaries were going, our part was going to go up.
I said, yeah, I think it was $7,500.
That's the only county that's already... And we have... That's because our pay has come down. And we have Miss Cindy Phillips here. Cindy, if you'd like to, have any, any board members have any questions, if they have any questions about the pay increase?
Sure. I would like to say it's an increase of $7,300 for your five nurses. And that increase came back because we are not getting reimbursed for Medicaid right now for our MCOs we have, Kentucky Spirit, who we have not been paid for over a year and a half. So we've got to pass that cost back to our providers, so that's, that's where the increase came from.
Now, is that $7,300 per nurse or total amount?
That's total amount. It would be $70,000 for your five nurses is what the contract would be for. Set off discussion. And the motion is second.
I make the motion to accept the agreement with no party.
And the second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Debbie?
Hi.
Roxanne?
I.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Chair votes out. Next leads us to a KSBA annual policy and procedure update for 2013, first year. Any motion is second or discussion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Roll call, please. Debbie?
Hi.
Roxanne?
I.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And the chair votes out. This leads us down to number seven, where we need to schedule administrative motion hearing. We need to schedule, I need a motion, Herb. Motion is second.
Chair, let's go. Let's explain, the law requires that administrative motion hearing be scheduled within a 20-day to 30-day window, so we need to take that into consideration. I think the 20 days will begin on Tuesday, so from, we need to, between 20 and 30 days from May 29th is what we need to...
We want to do it for next Thursday. It can't be less than 20, it can't be more than 30, rather than...
I'm sorry, they explained that we were, it's a 10-day window between, 20 days after May 29th, but no more than 30 days after May 29th.
So you're looking at the week of the 16th, 17th, June?
If you're some possible, maybe a request to reschedule by the end of the year, so we can come back to you.
I have a problem with me just basing those answers.
We're with the 17th versus, yeah, the 17th, 18th, and 20th.
Let's see. Somebody better than me that'd be good.
The 13th will be 21 days. June 13th will be 21 days from today.
I guess I can say if I have to.
So 26 will be 30.
That's my vacation week. That's my vacation week. I can cancel if I have to.
Yeah, mine was this week and 10 of the 5. The 20-day period starts on Friday the 14th.
So the 20-day would start on...
Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah. So then we have three more days in May, so then June 17th would be our 20th day.
So go to the 20th at 6:00. But we can schedule it anywhere between the 20th day and the 30th day.
So I think.
So we could go into the next week.
Right, two, two of those last two weeks.
Yeah, you want to do it at the same time you have the board meeting, huh? The, uh.
Probably not, maybe like the, and, and it would be up to the employees for them to public the project, you know.
Twenty fifth, is that good?
Two days, two days.
Good, good. The 24th?
I'm playing one, 24th to the 25th.
Okay, 25th is out. 24th?
Well, I'm good on 24th, are you?
Okay.
June 24th?
Is there any packages coming with this or will it come in conductors? We need a motion.
About six o'clock?
I, I will try to make sure y'all are just speed. I don't know too much myself yet, but I will.
So.
What time do you decide?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
So I make a motion, we set the administrative motion hearing for June 24th at 6:00 P.M. at Central.
Second. Roll call, please, David?
Hi.
Roxanne?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And the Chair of Town. Okay, the next one is, set the next meeting and do the chart.
Before you do that, I need clarification from you on the insurance. If I may. Can I?
Yes.
Okay. Eddie, just let me look at my proposal. I, you all threw me for a loop, I'm not going to spend a lot of time addressing you. I worked so long on these, I could tap that some. Reasons is why you should, thank you. Uh, no, when we were in the insurance meeting, I recommended, did a couple recommendations, I reviewed my proposal. I am withdrawing my recommendation that you increase your deductible, because I went back and reviewed your losses. And while losses make your rates go up, you would have paid out of pocket probably about, over the last two years, about $16,000 more money if you take, if you raised your deductible. And by the way, if you have individual questions, one thing in my proposal, I quoted $1,000 and if you don't know how cash is, they quoted you $5,000, let it be your option. The, the question, the big question that I have for you is on the umbrella. You know, you have currently a million-dollar liability to me, and it came on the beverage. Then you have a, what was quoted and what was in the bid specs was five million. I recommended that you go to 10 and it cost you, in my present proposal that you all received, it was additional $3,380 and 30 cents. I would strongly recommend that. I can give you a whole lot of reasons, but I just need to know if you all want to do that. How much did you budget for insurance?
What was the limit?
Oh, that you did. Okay. I just thought maybe I have to say just a minute.
Can you, can you explain that again?
Okay, what happens, if you have a bus wreck, for example, right now, and let's say that, that it's the bus driver's fault, the board is held liable. And your liability limit is $2 million per state statute, that's what it has to be. Right now, what you all just voted to accept, that what was in your bid specs, was a $5 million umbrella over that. So you could have $7 million. Heaven forbid, if there was a catastrophic accident, by taking the 10 million, it would, it would give you another $5 million. The same happens if somebody gets hurt, you all are sued as a board because this is overall coverage. That's the recommendation.
Like Mr. Wilson, I discovered something last two days too, I'm surprised. And I want to explain as well, just for the benefit of Mr. Hudson, so that people understand where the legalities are in terms of what's being suggested here. Because Crackery Wilson was the only bidder on your property liability insurance, there is an exception in the multiple procurement code to competitive soliciting in that situation. If you just hit the one bidder, then obviously it's not very competitive. So you can work with Crackery Wilson to further negotiate. And that may, it may be, in upper negotiations, when you announce negotiation, you may change your specs or whatever, but because he was the only bidder on that particular item, you are free to negotiate.
In, in addition to that, you were correct. And in addition to that though, in the bid specs, KDC, KCDC states, if there are options, please list them that you wish the board to consider, and that was in my bid.
I would say we take that off. Being like you say, a bus accident, your own had a major loss and you, I'd rather have any million.
Each individual person can sue in a bus accident, right?
Well, let's like, let's just, I mean, that's a, let's say that the bus is a, go back to the, the tragedy that happened in Oklahoma this week. They sued the board for, and I think there'll be a lot of lawsuits coming out of there. They sued the board for, you know, they, they put their storm shelter in a basement and then they didn't put pumps or drains or something. But it's a freakish accident, would ever happen again, probably not, but I can guarantee you there's still be lawsuits over that. And that just gives you another layer. Just thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn and put the bids down. Yeah, do we not? Oh, okay.
A little bit agree on his.
Okay.
Since that's already part of the recommendation in his bid, we have to.
Rebid?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
No, you don't have to rebid it.
Well, I make a motion in second.
That's, that was, that was outside the bid specification, so, I mean, I don't know, but I would think.
Because you're the only bidder on that, you can rebid, so just, just whatever clarity this group will need from you.
Do you need us to?
I recommend we do.
Okay, we need a motion and second thing to accept this proposal. I want that motion.
I'll say.
Roll call, please?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Roxanne?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And the Chair of Town. Now we need a motion in a second to set the next meeting in the chart. Next meeting will be June 27th, this is pretty unusual for us. Motion is second. Roll call, please?
Hi.
David?
Roxanne? Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And the Chair of Town.
Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.